Mics are on.
Mics are on. Thank you very much. All right. I'm going to call this meeting of the Town of Wenham Planning Board to order at 6:31. The meeting is being held in the Bueker Elementary School multipurpose room at 11th School Street in Wenham.
Can you put the microphones up? We never can hear you.
Yeah, it's, this room is bad, too, I think. We noticed that the last time. Is that better? So when the board speaks, please, we're going to have to speak directly into the mics. Where was I? The meeting is being broadcast and recorded on HW Cam also, and we're on Zoom. I can see we have a select board member on Zoom and potentially some other folks, and our staff, Kate Mallory, is also attending on Zoom. So I'll just open the public hearing on the MBTA Communities 3A Proposal. Margaret, I wonder if you would read the public hearing notice into the record, and then I have a couple of words, and then we have a presentation. So, Margaret?
Yes. Notice is hereby provided that the Wenham Planning Board will conduct a hearing pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, on the following one article to amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Wenham. The public hearing will be held on Wednesday, April 16th, 2025, at 6:30 PM at the Bueker Elementary School, 11th School Street, Wenham, Massachusetts, at which time all interested persons may appear and be heard in relation thereto. The planning board's agenda could be found on the calendar of upcoming events at wenhamma.gov, 48 hours prior to the public hearing. The article is "To amend the Town of Wenham zoning bylaw and zoning map to create a new multifamily overlay district comprising two sub-districts in which multifamily housing is allowed as a right and mixed-use development is allowed by special permit and to make changes related thereto. A copy of the full text of the article and accompanying maps could be reviewed at the office of the town clerk and on the town website. Ian Weeks, Chair, Wenham Planning Board, published in the HW News Friday, March 28th and Friday, April 4th, 2025."
Thanks, Margaret.
Thank you.
So our plan tonight is to have a maybe 10-minute presentation, just to remind people what the proposal is. We, as a board, have been working on this, I'm reminded, since February of 2023. We have held two public forums, and we've heard from many people at those forums and also at other meetings, open meetings of our board. I'm just going to ask, because I know this is a very contentious issue, and people have very strong opinions, one way or the other, about it, so I'm asking everyone here for their thoughtful respect for one another and for us. We are a small community, and we are all neighbors. I'm going to turn this over to Dan. We're in the public hearing now. The way the process is going to work, Dan will do a presentation. There will be some slides. And we will then call on people to come up to the podium and give public hearing. Please announce your name, your street address. I'm going to ask to run this on basically town meeting style, where I'm going to ask for three minutes per person and keep time and one statement per person, because all of us would like to go home at a normal hour, everyone here, I'm sure. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dan. Dan will do a presentation. We will have the hearing. The board will deliberate, and then we will see where we are.
Do you have any handouts?
Margaret, I think the only thing that's here is the handout for the agenda. Is that correct?
Yeah, no, we don't, we didn't have any handouts for this one, Anne. Everything's going to be on the screen.
So we can definitely go back to slides if you need them when you're speaking, if you want to refer to a slide. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dan Pascarello, Vice Chairman of the Planning Board. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Anne. Can everybody hear me? Okay. I'm Dan Pascarello. We, as a board, have been working on this issue, as Anne said, since February of 2023, if not earlier. It started with a subcommittee on MBTA compliance. Our former member and select board member, Peter Clay, was also a member of that subcommittee. But we met with a consultant, a compliance consultant, who helped us select the candidates for the districts, which I'll go over in a minute. And ultimately, we, as a board, selected the two proposed districts for our multifamily overlay districts. So I want to start with just some basic information about what the MBTA Communities law requires. Margaret, if you go to the next slide, please.
Yep.
So we have been designated as a commuter rail community, which has a specific definition under the regulations in the statute. We in Wenham have 1,460 existing housing units and 111 developable station area acres. The minimum compliance requirements for Wenham under 3A is that we have to have a total of 24, I'm not, the microphone is cutting in and out, so we have to have a total of 24 acres minimum zoned for MBTA compliance with 365 units. We're also subject to a gross average density total across the town of 15 units per acre. 20% of those numbers have to be located within a half mile of the station. So that equates to a minimum of 73 units in 4.8 acres within the half-mile radius. We're in a unique position because we share our station with Hamilton, so we don't have a full circle like other towns would. We actually have a much smaller area to place those 4.8 acres and 73 units. The remainder of the acreage and the units can be placed anywhere within our town based on the former guidelines and now regulations that EOHLC has adopted. EOHLC is the state agency. It's the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So they have been charged with formulating guidelines, now regulations, that determine compliance. Next slide. So this slide shows where our two districts are. The darker green in the middle of the slide is the walnut large, which is MFOD-1. It's a total of 6.3 acres. And then MFOD-2 is, I think it's five lots down on Boulder Lane, which is, we have this number later, it's 26 or 7 acres.
29.
29. Thank you, Margaret. So our consultant identified a number of different areas in town. We've went through this process to determine what we thought were the best districts to meet compliance and our minimum requirements. And we were subject to certain components of the regulations which limited our flexibility, one of which was we are not able to split lots. So we can't take, let's say, a five-acre lot, and we only needed three acres, and we can't split that. We had to pick an entire lot. So you'll notice that we're slightly higher in the station area. We have 6.3 acres instead of 4.8, because one of our lots was 4.7, and the next lot was slightly larger than that. So that's, that's the reason why the numbers are a bit off. And as I mentioned, we, our compliance consultant was JM Goldson. That's who we worked with on this. If we go to the next slide, Margaret. So this slide shows MFOD-1. This is the zero walnut and 100 large lane. It's 6.3 acres total. And in this lot, the density will be somewhere around 13 units. So I believe the total number that would be allowed by zoning would be 82 units at this particular site. In the next slide?
I just lost the connection. I'm sorry. Not sure what happened.
I don't have the total, but it's like 284.
It's, um...
Hold on.
Good. Technology is great when it works and not so hot when it doesn't.
I'm not sure. Hold on, let me, let me grab it back again. Yep, no, it, it lost the connection somehow. Okay, and here, and, okay, and then from the beginning. Oh my.
We have a cons, our tech...
Let me move this out of the way. Yep, can you help me? So...
Go back to share screen.
Yep. It should be sharing the screen.
Okay, go to the arrow.
This one?
Below, next to the green, up, over one, down, share.
Here?
Down.
This one.
Yeah.
And then go to the arrow next to it there.
Okay.
Sorry, hit the share button. And then pick that one, maybe?
See if that works. All right, and then?
No, I don't think.
Hold on, let me stop the, let me stop the show here. And the show, okay, and we'll go back to share again. Okay.
I've got something now.
Okay, and we're going to go to, oh, from the beginning, okay. And we're going to go to...
Good job.
This one?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right, we're back.
All right, we're back. Sorry for the glitch. This is MFOD District 2, which is Boulder Lane. It's off of 128. It's near Gordon College. It's obviously not within a half mile of the station, but under the regulations, we are allowed to select areas that are beyond the half-mile station area. So this is 29 acres total. The density here is higher so that our town-wide average will hit that 15 mark. And I believe the total number of units here for zoning allowance would be 284, which means that the total number would, between the two, would be 366, which gets us to our, just above our minimum requirement of 365. We go to the next slide? So we have prepared a draft zoning bylaw, and these are some of the highlights of what is in the bylaw. The bylaw is available on the website if anybody wants to look through all of it. We are requiring 10%, 10% affordable units for any 3A development. As you may know, Wenham has achieved compliance with its SHI inventory. We're not allowed to go above 10%, so we are requiring the 10%, however. We will allow mixed use by special permit. The multifamily is obviously by right under the statute. There's a three-story, 35-foot height limit. We're imposing a 40-foot buffer zone from residential property. These are the parking space requirements, one and a quarter in District 1, two in District 2. We will require site plan review. We will require 20% open space. And we're also requiring covered bike parking per unit in the building. And again, those are the densities. So in MFOD-1, it would be 13, and in MFOD-2 would be 17 per unit, I mean, per acre, pardon me. So we have some examples of what this would look like, just so people can get an idea. This is what a 15-unit-per-acre density model could look like.
I'm sorry.
What just happened?
Something up on me.
You want to go back to share screen, I think, Margaret?
Yeah, I'm not sure why it keeps doing that.
I think maybe you've got, do you have papers on your touchpad?
Um... I am sorry. Okay, and then?
Okay.
Great.
Okay. Got you back.
Right, so these are different-sized lots to give just a few different perspectives here. This is not what we're planning, and I should note, we've had several other public forums. I see a lot of familiar faces in the audience tonight. I'm sure you've heard us say this before. This is a zoning exercise. This is not a construction exercise from the board. We're required to create zoning. We're not required to actually build units. So if we go to the next slide, Margaret? So this is, this is an example. This is a development Beverly. To give you an idea of what 12 units per acre might look like, this is on McKinley Ave. And then in our next slide, we have an example, this is Hamilton, the Willow Street Apartments.
Tree Bakery, which, if you haven't been there, is delicious.
And this is 18 units per acre with mixed use, which would, which would be the bakery. So I'm sure people are familiar with challenges to the 3A law, the most familiar of which was the Milton, the Town of Milton sued the Attorney General. So the Milton, the Town of Milton decision, the Supreme Judicial Court ruled in January of this year that the MBTA Communities Act is constitutional, that the Attorney General can enforce the law, but that the guidelines that were issued by EOHLC were unenforceable, and the court invalidated those because they were not promulgated in accordance with the State Administrative Procedure Act, Chapter 30A. So EOHLC, in response to the court's decision in January, issued emergency regulations. They were very plain about the fact that they didn't make any substantive changes to their regulations. They changed the deadlines for compliance so that, for us, our compliance deadline is July 14th. A few days ago, the EOHLC issued new permanent regulations, again, with minimal substantive changes. There's really no effect on Wenham. We're still required to hit those minimum numbers that we talked about earlier, which is 365 units. So Wenham's response, if we go to the next slide, Margaret, please?
Yep. Dan, could I ask if we could just take a quick break? I just want to make sure what's showing on the Zoom screen. If I could just ask for a quick break?
Sure.
I want to, I need to switch screens up a little bit. I want to make sure that the people who are on Zoom are seeing the correct, the correct thing. Okay.
I think it would help, too, Margaret, if you pulled your papers down.
My thought is that they're not seeing it, and I can't tell who was on there.
Are you getting messages that people can't?
So I'm not sure what they're seeing, Joe. What do you think?
So there's a blue button on the bottom of her screen, which says, yeah, she has a screen. I stayed through her screen.
I know.
Which is widely discovered by the court.
Yep, okay. Okay, so we can stop share.
She also has this.
Yeah, tell me.
Tell me, I have two papers from touchpad. That's part of the problem.
She's using a mouse, but she's also hitting her touchpad.
Does it tell us?
Here it, we should be sharing, because we're, this shows up as screen sharing on the Zoom interface.
So because I've got two screens, I've got one and two.
Yeah, so this, it should be screen sharing.
Okay, all right.
Maybe if someone online can shoot us a message and make sure that you can see the slides.
Catherine, can you hear us? Catherine Harrison?
Yeah, they can see.
You can see them. Excellent.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Because if it's touching the pad, it's going to...
Okay, all right. Thank, thank you, Dan. I think we should be all set.
Okay, so, so back to the SJC's decision in Milton. We, as a town, took actions as a result of the Milton litigation. You may remember, we were here in September in a similar posture. We were ready to propose our zoning amendment to the Select Board, but we paused that process because the Select Board decided to postpone our special town meeting in the fall, because we were waiting for the decision in Milton. So after the SJC's decision in Milton, Wenham has submitted an interim compliance action plan to the state, which has been accepted, and we are in interim compliance. In, in order for us to remain in compliance, we need to submit our proposed zoning, assuming it's approved at town meeting before July 14th of 2025. The Select Board also sent a letter to EOHLC Secretary Augustus expressing Wenham's specific town-related concerns with the proposed regulations. So that was part of the...
God, sorry. I don't know why.
That was part of the public comment process. And I believe that that letter is available on the town website. The Select Board, part of the SJC's decision was requiring the state to comply with 3A, which meant issuing a fiscal impact statement. So the Select Board sent a separate letter to Secretary Augustus inquiring about the fiscal impact that should have been issued. And the town has also formed a fiscal impact group to study potential impacts of 3A on Wenham. So if we could go to the next slide, please? So what would the impacts of noncompliance be? There is other litigation that is pending, which I'll get to in a minute or two, but the general counsel for the EOHLC has recently stated in an affidavit submitted in that litigation that it is the current policy of the Healy-Durst School Administration that all discretionary state grants to municipalities may be subject to compliance with 3A. There are four particular grants noted in the statute, so you may have noted that this policy is broader than what's set forth in the statute. In the administration is, this is their position right now. Grants that, where the state has discretion on recipient selection or any state matching funds are subject to their policy. This is, again, according to Attorney G. But the policy does not apply to nonmunicipal entities seeking funding for projects in noncompliant districts unless that would otherwise be provided by statute. And the example they gave for that would be Chapter 70, State Aid for Public Schools, or federal grants where the state is just a pass-through entity. Compliance status of a town is determined at the time of the award of a grant and at the time of contracting. If a municipality falls out of compliance after the time of contracting, those funds will not be rescinded. So this is relevant to Wenham, because we were awarded a $65,000 grant in the fall to help us with our, revise our subdivision rules and regulations. When we didn't submit a proposed amendment by December 31st, the state refused to release those funds to us. After the Milton decision, however, those funds have been released to us because we technically have never been out of compliance. So the $65,000, I believe, has already been contracted for, so that grant can't be rescinded by the state. The administration policy, however, may affect future grant applications. One example might be the Nine Maple Street project in 2025. It's important to note that this policy about enforceability, or the enforceability of the administration policy has not yet been determined by any courts. Okay, if we could go to the next slide. We're going to wait till after the presentation. So one of the differences from our proposed amendment in the fall and our current proposed amendment is the inclusion of a sunset provision. So the purpose of this provision has been the uncertainty of the enforceability of, first, the guidelines, and now the regulations, and there are still statutory challenges that are out there. If we go to the next slide, just so... So what our sunset provision, which has been unanimously adopted by this board, and I believe unanimously approved by the Select Board, states is that if, for any reason, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, "The emergency regulations or any permanent regulations shall be, one, deemed ineffective, unenforceable, or invalid in whole or in part by a final judgment of the courts of the Commonwealth, or, two, repealed, rescinded, changed, or amended in such manner as to alter the metrics in the regulations concerning unit-capacity requirements as applied to the town of Wenham, i.e. requiring other than 365 units for Wenham to be deemed in compliance. This zoning bylaw amendment, the relevant sections thereto, shall be voided, of no legal effect, and immediately rescinded without further action required from the town." And the purpose of this is an attempt that if it's found that the requirements for Wenham are deemed unenforceable or invalid, that we don't need to go back to town meeting and go through this process again and, and...
To get rid of them.
To get, yeah, to repeal them. The last sentence here, we have what's called a severability provision in our amendment, which means if one section of amendment might be unenforceable, the whole thing doesn't fall. This, however, we say, notwithstanding the severability, that if this sunset provision is deemed unenforceable, then the whole amendment is, the whole bylaws. So we also have a further proposed amendment that, if we go to the next slide, Margaret?
Which is difficult to read, so...
This is difficult to read. I'm not going to read the whole thing. I'm just going to paraphrase this. We, as a board, have not discussed this yet. We intend to discuss this tonight. But the gist of it is that the town will not be responsible to bear direct costs of development here for additional infrastructure or, or what have you. I don't think parabeebe is actually part of that, but, right, that's a different provision. So if we go to the next slide, Margaret, and this is our last slide. So what are our next steps? We have sent this proposed bylaw to the Select Board for inclusion on the warrant. It's been referred back to us to hold this public hearing, which we're holding tonight, and we'll hear commentary from anybody who wants to speak on it. And the procedure would be then, it goes back to the Select Board. They determine whether to put it on the warrant or not, and then it will go to town meeting, and this is up to the voters of Wenham to either vote this up or down. This is not, the planning board doesn't make the ultimate determination here. The special town meeting, I believe, has been scheduled for June 9th. If it is adopted, if it is approved by the town, and this would be a simple majority vote, it's then sent to the Attorney General for approval of the adopted articles. The one thing I did want to mention is, the state auditor has made a determination that 3A, in her opinion, constitutes an unfunded mandate in the state. There are several municipalities that have filed lawsuits against the state under the unfunded mandate statute, and those cases are pending. They've been consolidated in front of Judge Gilde, who's sitting in Plymouth County. I know that Middleton is one of those towns. They, those towns are seeking a preliminary injunction. The state has filed a motion to dismiss. All of those motions have been argued in front of Judge Gilde, and I believe that there hasn't been a decision yet. We're awaiting, or... We're awaiting, or the parties are awaiting decisions on those matters. For purposes of tonight, I just want to note that it is not within the planning board's scope to make a determination to file litigation. That is a Select Board issue, it is not a planning board issue. So that's, that's all we have on the presentation. If, I'm not sure if we're going to discussion now, or if.
I think discussion by the board. I'm not sure how much there will be, but if you can just hold your comments, please, until I call people.
Just wonder what the amendment part of it is.
There were two, well.
We're gonna.
We're gonna have a conversation about that amongst ourselves right now, so maybe that will help you.
Yeah, and if you could ask people to go to the microphone.
I will, I think we're not quite ready for that at this point. So is there any discussion amongst the board, particularly about this? Sorry, particularly about the new language on no direct costs being borne by the town?
Can we put that back up on the screen so we could, we could see it?
I think that would be a good idea.
I do have it.
We have it, but it's hard to read.
I would say that Mr. Anderson has proposed an amendment on the no direct cost, so I'd ask Mr. Anderson to speak to that. The other issue is, since we've had a development from EOHLC where they've now issued their permanent regulations and there are no more emergency regulations, we may want to take out some language from our sunset provision, or edit that accordingly.
Margaret, can you pull that slide back up?
Try to bring that back.
We should just leave the slides up in case people who are speaking want to refer to one or more of them.
Let me go back to the beginning, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
This one here.
The second of the two amendments.
Do you want this one?
Yes, please. David, you wanted to say a few words.
Yes, so one of the, I'd say, persistent concerns that's been articulated by the community and also by this board is concerns that development of this scale could result in a financial burden on this town, specifically around infrastructure. Infrastructure creation, infrastructure retrofitting. And that is, I think, a very legitimate concern. And so we have had conversations in prior meetings by this board about the extent to which the town could include within its proposed bylaw a section prohibiting or limiting the exposure of the town to the financial burdens of infrastructure-related costs directly arising from any development in the proposed multifamily overlay district. I would say there's some fair ambiguity about the town's ability to limit those direct costs, at least in prior conversations in public session by town council. I would say somewhat fortuitously, in connection with the unfunded mandate cases that Dan just discussed, the state has taken a position in litigation, which is significant because generally positions taken in litigation can stop a party or can prevent a party from taking a contrary position later on. The state has taken position that 3A and the regulations do not, cannot require a town to assume the direct costs of infrastructure. That's my paraphrase, but that's how I read what the state has said. It's specifically in the Commonwealth's reply in support of its motion to dismiss the unfunded mandate litigation. I see that as an opportunity to include this language based on this April 5 filing by the state, which effectively says that the town cannot be obligated to, I won't read it out, but to assume or bear, bear the obligation of infrastructure costs directly arising from any contemplated or actual development in the multifamily overlay district. I think that's a good thing. I think in the first instance, it should be borne by a developer. If it's not economically feasible for the developer to do it, then it's a question of whether or not there are other funding sources, such as from the state or otherwise. Ultimately, it could be a town decision whether or not it's something that we want to do because the development is so potentially positive on the whole for the town. But the point of this amendment is that the town would not be obligated, could not be obligated, to assume the costs of any infrastructure directly arising from a proposed or actual development in the multifamily overlay districts.
Thank you, David. Any discussion by the board? Comfortable putting this forward? Dan, you wanted to speak, I think, to the other amendment that we had already, I don't want to say adopted, because we haven't adopted any of this, but already discussed and articulated support for.
Yeah, with respect to the sunset provision.
On the sunset provision.
I think we just, we included a reference to emergency regulations, which I don't think that we need to include anymore. I think we can just say.
The permanent regulations, yeah.
If for any reason, general law, Chapter 48, Section A, or the regulations pertaining thereto.
Shall be deemed ineffective.
Right. So I would move that we amend the sunset provision text in that manner, just due to recent developments.
Would you like us to second that and vote on it before we go to the public hearing?
I think that that's a pretty easy one, so.
I do, too. So could I have a second, please?
A second.
Oh, in favor, Week says aye.
Pasquale, aye.
Schoenberger, aye.
Woodland, aye.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye.
And then I would move that we adopt Mr. Anderson's proposed amendment as Section AA of the bylaw amendment and reorder the other sections accordingly.
Second.
Oh, in favor, Week says aye.
Pasquale, aye.
Schoenberger, aye.
Woodland, aye.
Anderson, aye.
So with that, if there's no further discussion by the board, I'm gonna open, well, the public hearing's open, but I'm gonna offer the podium to whoever would like to speak. Again, please, we're gonna try for three minutes a person. One statement per person. We'll keep time if we have to. And we'll keep the slides up if you want to refer to them, so. I think we're first come, first served here, so.
South Celeste, 20 Purdon Road. You guys would be happy to know that I don't have a rant for today. But I do have a question.
That's kind.
Yeah. And this is regarding infrastructure. You're saying that we're not responsible for the infrastructure. That would be the responsibility of the developer, presumably. Infrastructure and supply are not mutually exclusive. We get our water from the Ipswich River. If the supply is not available, you can put all the pipes in the ground you'd like. But if there's no water, and we have that problem, and I don't see a developer sending any pipes out to the Quavon Reservoir. So that's an issue that needs to be addressed. Even though we might not be paying for infrastructure, where's the water in that infrastructure coming from? That's what I want to know.
I think a member of the committee has, did we get a statement from the Water Department as to how many more hookups the town can manage? There is, I think there is a finite number.
What we have now, I just drove past a critical three sign.
Me, too.
Coming over here, and I got a notice in the mail last week that was pretty grim.
Yeah.
And that's every single year. I got a brown long with a sprinkler system I can't turn on.
I think, I think the question is, and I think Mr. Pasquale alluded to this in his presentation, and I know that this is not a happy thing to say, but it's not a development mandate, it's a zoning overlay. If there's no infrastructure, you can't do the development.
Well, no, I understand, but I'm just trying to define.
Absolutely well-taken.
I'm trying to get the, you know, define the difference between infrastructure and supply. It is considerably different.
Agreed.
And we don't have the supply, they can lay all the pipes and hookups they want, but it's going to detract from the service of everybody else in town and also in some of their neighboring towns as well.
I'm agreeing with you. If there's no supply, I don't think there will be any development.
So how will that be addressed? That's, is anybody even considering that at this point? And, you know, I mean, 365 units, that's a lot of gallons.
Well, I mean, I don't want to quibble with you, but I think the point is built in the infrastructure. There's obviously, and I'm not being cute, I'm sincerely responding to your question. There's obviously water in the world for any development, but the question is, how do you get it here? And that's infrastructure. So there's water in Wenham Lake for development, but it can't be accessed by property in Wenham unless there is infrastructure that supports it. So I think the concept of infrastructure is, makes plain that that's how the water that exists gets here. And so, you know, for example, if, and we've confronted this elsewhere in this town, if there are development interests that can find a way through private means, public and private means, at their own cost to get hookups to water supplies that are available and have capacity, like the Salem-Beverly Water Board, that's not really the town's purview.
Right, but we're gonna need to do something like that because the Wenham Lake, the Ipswich River, and even the well in my backyard is all the same water table. So, and we've been trying to get water from the Quavon Reservoir for I don't know how long, and we've been refused. It doesn't matter if we take it from the lake, it goes down in the river. If you take it out of my backyard, it goes down in the river.
There is a, there is a multi-town task force that's working on this issue under Bruce Tar's direction, where they're trying to figure out how to make this work. More water, specifically?
Will we see that before any of these plans attempt to go forward?
I don't think so. Also, in the bond bill, which was pulled out by the legislature, because a lot of what you're asking for in general are legislative, they pulled out the research study that would help Salem and Beverly connect to the Quavon.
I'm gonna note that we're at the four-minute mark.
Oh, I was supposed to ask you a question, but you guys were answering. You took up most of the three minutes.
I want to give you, I want to give you extra time, because we've been taking up yours, so.
That needs to be addressed, and that's really.
I think we all agree with you.
So.
Thank you, by the way, for your comment and for your attention. You've been paying attention to this since the beginning.
Just a point of procedure, I know multiple people want to speak, so I would recommend forming a line behind Ms. Metternich, if.
Please state your name and your address for the.
Stacy Metternich, 3 Dexter Lane. So we'll go through some of this stuff I know we've already talked about. Some of the, I have issues with some of the discrepancy. There was a study done on Boulder Lane that has been posted, I believe, on the planning board's site. And it's a discrepancy of how many units can be built there compared to what you have for this overlay. And if you've ever been on that property, you would know that there's gonna be half to, a lot of stuff be done there. And I know that over at Gordon College, to add to that, there had been a developer who wanted to buy some of that property, and I can't remember the exact amount, 350, 250? I can't remember right now. And they were denied water and could not find a source, so they kind of gave up. So that is my big issue, where you want to put a lot of development over in that area. And the waters that it can, source that it could come from is Beverly Water for that. And they denied it. So again, we have water issues. The other thing I have issues, I know, I feel like we have more of a crisis on affordability, not a housing crisis, and I wish we would put more emphasis on affordability. 10% is really low. This is not meeting the demands of people who are moving out of Wenham. The other thing is the education costs. And I know there's been studies that have been put out there saying that it won't be affected by this, but if you look at some of the footnotes, it says that the regional schools were not included in the study. So I think we need to take a look at what kind of costs with the kids coming into some of those units would affect just our schools, the impact of that. And that's gonna be costs right there. So, and then lastly, just to think about Lexington had approved going with this project, they're rethinking it and trying to pull back on how many units. So those are just my comments and thoughts amongst the water issues.
Appreciated, appreciated. I will say that we agree with you on the affordability question, and if we were allowed to do more than 10%, I think we would have, but we were not by the regulations, so.
The state capped it at 10%.
The state law caps it at 10%.
I understand, I just think if we could push back on that, is, that's an issue. Because it's more of an affordability of living here as opposed to a housing crisis. Because if you look on Zillow, whatnot, there was a lot of homes rentals, whatnot, for sale. So it's not a housing crisis, it's an affordability. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your attention.
Hi, Mike Corsetti. I represent the owner of Boulder Lane, one of the properties. So on the district compliance application.
Can you give your address, please? I'm sorry for the record.
It is, I don't know if it has an address, 128 Boulder Lane.
Your personal address, or?
No, no, the address of the property.
Okay, good.
It's in a butter.
Fine.
Okay, yeah.
But it's not you. Can you name the person who you're speaking for?
Gary Corsetti, right there.
Okay, thank you.
My personal address? It's 19 Ocean Ave Gloucester.
Okay, you just need to give your, the name of the person for whom you're speaking.
Gary Corsetti.
And the address, which is 128 Boulder.
128 Boulder Lane. So district compliance application requires anyone working on 3A to disclose information that would restrict development by right. There's a serious issue with all the lots you've chosen. They're unbuildable, and I think the board knows that. I've issued this letter, did anyone on the board get that today?
We all got it, yes.
Okay, yeah, I outlined each issue, broken down per parcel. And I'd like to also reference the BSC Group study by professional engineers outlining developmental error. We cannot ignore a study by a professional engineer and choose the latest consultants. You have to look at all the information, you have to disclose these restrictions in the application. That's simply the state law. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We've been looking at this and thinking about it for a couple of years. Appreciate your thoughts. Name?
Edward Flynn, 2 Siyas Lane. So I've taken a really hard look. The Select Board has a study, an excellent study actually, done by the town of Milton, unrelated to their court case, by a company called RKG. And it's actually on the Select Board's website, and it's really comprehensive and extremely well-done. And if you take a look at the forecasted numbers for the 365 units, that translates with 10% being affordable, 37 units, which is 1.4 student-school-aged children per unit for subsidized housing, equals 52 children. The remaining 328 units, the multiple is .8, for children in a three-bedroom unit. And that comes up to be 262. So the impact of the number of students for the schools is exactly, according to this, which I think is valid, 314 students with the 365 units. The total school cost, you take 62% of the cost per student, according to the Milton study. It's not 100% of the $20,000 per student, because there are economies in there. You have one superintendent, one school building, things like that. So it's 62% of the $20,000. And that equals, the school costs for all the students that I just mentioned equals $3,893,600. $3,893,600. The town side, which is Police, Fire, and DPW, on average, according to the study, is 18%. And if you add up the total amounts, which I have, of those three departments, you get $627,138 in additional costs from those three. So the total cost to the town, not including the infrastructure that everyone's talking about, and I'll make a prediction on that, by the way, the developers for the downtown Crosby's Place will tie into Beverly. Boulder Lane water is already tied into Beverly, so now they're gonna go to the sewer system too. I guarantee it. That's what's gonna happen in both cases. I used to live in Weston, Regis, the school there, went, just took a sewer pipe and ran it all the way through Weston into Waltham, tied it in, and it was done. It's a really cheap way for them to do it, and I might predict that's what they will do. And the state will reimburse Beverly for that. It's in the law. I don't know if you saw that part of the law, where they will help pay contractors to move through one town into another to get sewage. It's in the law itself. So, I have this study, which I was directed to by the Select Board Chair. It's on their website, it's extremely good. Everyone keeps saying-
I'm gonna note you had three minutes.
My, oh, three minutes?
I'm gonna give you 30 seconds more.
I have 30 seconds more, thank you very much. I think this, this study is extremely well-done. I Googled the company, and they appear, RKG, they appear to be the gold standard in this kind of thing. The town used the company, your planning board actually used a company called Cambridge Econometrics. I have no idea where you found them. I figured it was Cambridge, Massachusetts. It's not. It's Cambridge, England. It's a socialist company. I don't know if you knew this. It's nonprofit.
That's Cambridge Analytica. That's a different company.
Cambridge Analytica.
I have, I have everything in my thing right there, so I can take it out and show it to you. If I pronounce, if I pronounced it wrong, I, forgive me. I'm an old man, I can't remember everything. But they are a pro-high-density housing unit company. Not that it matters. They had something, actually, they were in some ways, they were-
I'm gonna cut you off, because you have four minutes.
Okay. Just let me finish my sentence. In some ways, their study was actually, made the numbers look worse. But this study, if anyone wants to look at it, it's online, it's on the Select Board website, and everything you wanna know about how much this cost is there.
Your time is up.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
Thank you for your comments. I'm sure they will be helpful to the group at Town Hall that's working on the costs of this.
Madam Chairman, would you like me to keep time?
I have a timer here.
Thank you.
My name is Elise Nye, and I live on 114 Larch Row, and I wanted to talk about the traffic pattern that would potentially change on Larch Row and Larch Lane with that piece of property. I walk with my dog on Larch Lane to the train station quite often, and I think I walk by senior housing and what would happen to those properties, and seeing that the property abuts to the Hamilton-
I'm sorry, there's someone speaking. Would you please sit down?
Sorry, we showed him the economy.
I'm, I'm, that's great. We're available after the meeting, too. You can drop it by the Town Hall. I'm sorry, ma'am, will you start again?
Yep. So, the property, that little green spot there, that seems like the property ends right, right in the middle of the shopping center, so that there's, where would the traffic access be to that property? It seems like the only property I see is Larch Lane, which is a very small road, and adding 80-plus homes or residences on that little spot is more than the number of homes on Larch Row in its entirety. And has there been, as part of your planning exercise, has there been any discussion with the town of Hamilton on helping with the traffic access to that property, given that, number one, Hamilton is, their planning exercise is to use Winthrop and use that to meet their 3A requirement? But Wenham taxpayers are subsidizing that by helping, if we vote to close Winthrop, that Hamilton gets a double benefit. They consolidate the school, and they can turn that into a 3A property, but Wenham is subsidizing it. So has there been any planning discussion about further down the road, that if someone does come and develop that property, that whether Hamilton should be helping with road access, because I think Larch Lane is too small to be handling all that traffic?
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Paschek, I'll answer.
Yep, I'll just respond briefly. We did have a joint planning board meeting with the Hamilton Planning Board, I think it was in August, about 3A. We're at very different, we were at very different points of the process. I think we still are. I don't think Hamilton is as far along in this process as we are. We did not specifically talk about traffic pattern.
Okay, because I do think that is something that you need to think about. You're picking this tiny little spot, and if you walk down that lane, there, you know, I walk by, it looks like senior housing, the Wenham Housing Authority, what, are those buildings gonna be displaced? What's gonna happen while all those cars are going in and out? It's a very small road.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, Tosh Blake, Sagamore Street in Hamilton. Just to maybe touch on a few points that some other people have made. I think the water question was kinda sidestepped as far as a source, and the infrastructure question, I think is a red herring. Any developer can simply, probably, I assume, tap into existing infrastructure that we have, that businesses and municipal buildings have water, they'll tap into it and drain, drain from the same source. The state will probably even subsidize them. It's possible, we don't know. We don't know what kind of developer will come in and how they'll be backed, and what kind of financial backing they have. Billions of our tax dollars could be spread around to different towns to help develop, so it's not just a zoning or planning exercise. There are people with real intentions behind this that don't, are taking this seriously and want to densify our towns. It's not a, it's not like a joke or a hypothetical. I don't like the idea of planning exercise, because you can change a law, like Massachusetts can have a law that says, okay, anyone who comes here, if you, if you're homeless, we'll shelter you, and it turns into billions of dollars in taxpayer money going out the window. So a little law that seems like maybe nothing at the time turns into something bigger. School costs, again, that's another, you could kinda call it an infrastructure thing. If you have to build new schools, we have to educate anyone who lives here. If they have children, we can't just say, well, we're not gonna educate you, and if 1,000 children potentially show up in 300 units, that's a lot of children. Add Hamilton's share of 3A, and that's a lot more children. So, we're looking at, like I said, an unfunded mandate that's not just building a few pipes and such. It's millions and millions and millions of dollars of potential costs that the state really doesn't care. If, you know, we can pay for it, they want to densify the towns, unfortunately. And these, addressing these sunsets, I think Mr. Anderson said that we could add some riders to our 3A thing. That's not gonna fly with the state. The AG has said that if you add anything that's discriminatory against certain protected classes, it's not gonna fly. They're not gonna, the, the state, the governor and the attorney general are not going to agree with anything we submit that kind of, will say that we have any kind of disagreement. Once the town votes for it, it's in, it's the law. And so my suggestion is, given all these things, the unfunded mandate, the irresponsibility, and I have to put some responsibility in the planning board, depending on what you recommend, you cannot, and this is the regional problem, cannot just be densifying the whole region and say, well, that's, that's the developer's problem, though, as long as they can pay for the pipes, who cares what happens to the water source? We all live here, and if we just put in these zoning exercises, they turn into a boondoggle for developers to come in and build stuff, and then leave and go to their vacation home in Florida, or wherever they are, and don't care what happens to our towns or the region, and it goes dry, and the drought doesn't just affect the eastern Mass, it's all over New England. There's been major droughts, including the Quabbin Zone, that's, you know, affecting the whole place. So I would hope that the planning board is doing your small part in this region, and I know it's a big ask, but to say no and not recommend this to the Select Board, and I'm making this point in Hamilton-
You were at three minutes.
Is, okay, okay, so it's-
Wrap up?
Just, I'll wrap it up. So your responsibility goes more than just following the law, I think, is as individual citizens, to do the right thing, and simply saying the state's telling you to do it, if it's the wrong thing, it's your responsibility as citizens to say no and not do this. Thank you.
All right, three and a half minutes. Thank you very much for your thoughts on this.
Peter, Peter Gwynne, 7 Fairview Ave.
Thank you.
My public statement to Wenham boards and Wenham residents. One, 3A is forever state zoning, not Wenham. Wherever 3A overlays are approved, presently, the overlay is a half-mile radius from the Wenham side of the MBTA station. This radius encompasses East Enon Village and the surrounding neighborhoods on Larch Row, Pingry Field, Main Street, Perkins and Porter Streets. 3A zoning, half-mile radius compliance leaves an open door for residents to sell to real estate investment firms and developers to purchase single homes for multi-apartment creation in the future, possible future. 3A is not affordable housing, even though you've allocated for 10%. 40B will continue by town population growth with 3A or without 3A. 20% of the 3A guideline compliance to date may depend on Wenham Planning Board overlay options such as Boulder Lane, Off Drake Vine, but could be rejected by the state upon submission, based on some things that were just recently said. Where then? The Wenham Planning Board has discussed linking 3A compliance in some way to Wenham's master plan. That strategy should be explained, and why. 3A state zoning guidelines to date leave no Wenham zoning controls for the number of unrelated occupant bathrooms and bedrooms for high-density apartment unit buildings. Wenham Select Board to date has not acted upon the Massachusetts Auditor's determination that 3A is an unfunded state mandate to petition for a compliance exemption. Why? A Wenham Select Board member stated publicly, April 14th, a suggested process for Regional School District and both town Select Boards to overturn the two-thirds vote of the Consolidated Cutler School at June 9th special town meeting to a simple majority vote. If enacted, a betrayal of public trust. It's impossible not to be concerned about how many times Wenham votes for future tax increases in the next two to three fiscal years, from new schools, to teachers, to school maintenance, to operating budgets, to infrastructure costs for a population growth connected to 3A approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to leave a copy of your statement for the record?
Sure.
I can see that you have a-
May I walk up, ma'am?
You absolutely may. Margaret will take it.
I don't want to make that mistake. I know.
No, no, it, the problem was that you were interfering with someone else's testimony.
I apologize. Are we showing the gentleman that it's been Cambridge Economics?
I, I understand. Does anyone else wish to speak?
I had a question on one of your slides. Could you go to the Boulder Lane MFOD slide?
It's here.
So I noticed this parcel selected. Why is it selected?
Oh, that- Yeah, I had that question, too. I actually wrote myself a note. I'm like, what is that?
No, that's my fault. I was, I was creating the map and, in order-
Technology.
Technology, yeah. I get GIS, you have to click on it sometimes.
Absolutely, yeah. I'm sorry, I just noticed it. No.
No.
It's not a parcel that's included.
No, I kinda glided over it, because I thought, that's just an error.
I'm such a tech genius.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't actually see that, so, good.
Yeah, thank you.
You gotta notice the details on this.
Sorry, Mrs. Kajewski, would you like, I think you're probably gonna have to pull it, I always have to pull it up, if you gotta pull it down.
Marjorie Kajewski, 7 Perkins Street. I just want to reiterate that the Wenham Select Board to date has not acted upon the Massachusetts Auditor's determination that 3A is an unfundable state mandate, and have not gone forward to petition for a compliance exemption in Superior Court. Other towns have gone legally forward requesting a compliance exemption. I, myself, requested that from one of the board members. I did not, I was told I had an email response, but I didn't get it. I asked for it to be sent to me again. It was not. Why? Why haven't we done that? Our own legal teams have done it for other towns. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I just have a question.
Take the podium, please.
Second time, so I wanted to get your permission.
No, it's fine. There's no one else wanting to speak.
My only, my only question for the board, and by the way, I don't feel adversarial toward the board at all. I mean, I may come across that way, but, but I, I'm not gonna be adversarial.
No, no, it's fine. Just state it again, because we have someone taking notes online, and I want to make sure she knows.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, 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 that's fine. I had, I had a question for Dan.
State your name again.
Oh, yes, sure. Edward Flynn, 2 Siyas Lane, I apologize.
Thank you.
Dan, I hope you're right, but I'm not sure you are. You think, you think this, do you think, me either. Do you think the state is gonna accept the sunset clause?
That's a good question. We'll find out. If the state doesn't want to accept the sunset clause, I would rather have our position than the state's position on that, because what our sunset clause says is, it only kicks in if the statute or the regulations are deemed unenforceable with respect to Wenham. So, the position would be, you have to proceed under unenforceable conditions.
I agree. I, I think it was well-thought out, and I really like it, but my thought is, just from the actions of the governor and the attorney general, in the, is it EOH, or whatever it is, I apologize.
Sorry.
They're pretty tough, but we'll see.
Yeah, they're typically disfavored. I'm, I'm not operating under any illusions here, but there have been other sunset provisions and other zoning bylaws, so we, we think it's worth including.
Well, I do, too.
I, I just want to point out that I think there may be an impression that we're not hearing, but we are, and these provisions are a result of us trying to hear and respond to what we're hearing. Does anyone else who's here wish to speak? If not, maybe I should close the public hearing. I was thinking we might be here very late tonight, but perhaps not.
No, I don't see anyone online with their hand up.
Does anyone online want to speak?
She said she didn't see anybody with her hands up.
No hands up? Yeah, we can't see on the screen, so.
It's okay.
Yeah.
More, more technology.
I know, I'm afraid to touch anything. It'll all disappear on me.
Can I ask one more question?
You can ask one more question. There's no one here who wants to speak, so why not? I, I was all, I was prepared to leave.
I apologize. Because we haven't closed the public hearing yet.
Edward, Edward, we'll leave. I, I, I apologize.
Don't.
But, but, well, thank you. Edward Flynn, 2 Siyas Lane. I had another question on one of the slides, but you don't have to show the slide. And the question was whether or not, now I'm forgetting my question, whether or not the state could withhold the funding of the consolidated school project if it goes through. Is that one of the things they're threatening to do?
No, I think this, what we, what the slide says is that the school funding is not the kind of funding that they can withhold.
I can't hear you, I'm piped up.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The school funding is not at risk. It's discretionary grants for things like subdivision ordinance, or acquiring open space, or that kind of thing. Do you want to respond?
I'm not sure. What the slide said was Chapter 70. I'm not familiar enough with Chapter 70 to know if it's different from MSBA grants, which I'm hearing it may be different. So, is it MSBA? Do I have the acronym right? So-
I think you do.
MSBA might be considered a discretionary grant by the state, however, this is the stated policy of the administration.
Yes.
The last bullet point is included, because no court has made a determination on this yet. This is a pretty broad policy. However, I will say what the SJC did determine, which was, the Attorney General can enforce this statute.
I saw that.
And it's not clear exactly what the Attorney General can do. She can sue for declaratory judgment, we know that. What she was seeking to do in the Milton case was to have a special master appointed and decide zoning for Milton if Milton wasn't gonna do it. So that wasn't ruled on in the Milton case, but that doesn't mean that they won't try to seek that remedy in the future, okay? So what, what we know from the Milton case is, this stat- So what, what we know from the Milton case is this statute is constitutional, it's not going away. This statute is a mandate on the towns, which means we have to do something. And one of the questions before us is are we going to do it and choose the districts ourselves or are we potentially going to subject ourselves to having somebody else to have these districts or choose these districts for us? So that's how I see that.
I, I, I agree with you. If you read the law itself, the town of Wenham, if we decided to vote no, and since we haven't, as far as I know, ever received any of the enumerated grants, don't have very much to lose. However, go ahead.
I, I would just note that we did lose $65,000 in the fall.
We did. That was rather recently, right?
And we were not, technically, we were not in non-compliance. We lost it anyway. We got it back once the Milton case was decided, as Dan described, but we do, we do get discretionary grants. We do apply for them and we do receive them pretty regularly, so the fact that it's quite broadly, the policy, the current policy is quite broadly stated, I think, is-
I guess, I agree with you, and I guess what I could, could probably rephrase it and say, the, the people of Wenham could choose between the grant, the enumerated grants and the law and whether or not they want to have 3A. The current Attorney General and the governor, as far as we all can tell, is playing very hardball and has really broadened that to be a lot of different things, and apparently they're adding things quite often as we go along. And my question was, because it's a timely issue, and I, I hear you saying you don't know, and then that's, if you don't know, you don't know. If you read the law, if you read the law, the answer-
I am hearing that MSBA grants are different from Chapter 70, so I-
So there's a possibility that if we get, vote for the new school, we may not get reimbursed?
I, I, if it's-
Well, if we're not in compliance.
If we're out of compliance.
But we are, currently, we're in compliance, so I'm going to-
And, excuse me, Kate Mallory has her hand up on screen.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I stand corrected. If we vote no later on 3A, if the town, it's going to go to town meeting, we're going to vote. If we vote no, is the government of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts going to withhold the money to the consolidated schools? Do we know the answer?
We do not know the answer. This board does not know the answer. I see a selectman standing behind you.
What the, the last thing I'll say on this is, is what the administration has said is that whatever other statute requires that you be in compliance with state law, they will deem non-compliance with 3A to be disqualifying for those grants. So it's going to be broader than, or the administration is taking the position that it will be broader than those four itemized-
Well, that includes a no vote too. Not compliance, but a no vote. So we're in compliance.
A non-compliance, that would be non-compliance because-
No vote would be non-compliance.
A no vote is non-compliance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I didn't know that part. If you're following, if you're following the letter of the law and they give you a choice to vote yes or no, and you vote no, I don't see us in non-compliance. I see us as voting no.
I understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
That they're going to consider it-
Right.
That we haven't adopted the zoning, which is what's required.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No more questions.
You got, you had it three times, sir.
Do you want me to, do you want me to call on Kate?
Do you want me to take Kate next? Kate Mallory on the line. Do you want to make a statement?
Can you hear us, Kate?
Kate Mallory, the town staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that we had some more information today that might be relevant to this conversation tonight. The town of Wenham has been working with Green Belt to acquire 9 Maple Street for preservation. Part of this would be applying for a state land grant, and that grant would be about $425,000 to help us purchase this property. And we found out today that if we do not pass the MBTA 3A zoning, that we would be out of compliance and not eligible for this funding. So that's $425,000.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Ben Timman, 236 Larch Row, member of the Select Board, just on the school bund, school building assistance point.
Thank you, that would be helpful.
And what Kate just said is certainly consistent with what we understand to be the, the administration's policy as, as stated in that top bullet, that any discretionary state grants to towns could be targeted by 3A non-compliance. And so it isn't just the statutorily delineated programs that, that are at risk, and the Milton argument at the SJC that the funding should be limited to those things was, was not adopted, certainly by the SJC and the Milton decision. I'm not sure if they squarely addressed it, but they didn't adopt that argument from Milton. So the state of affairs, as, as they exist now, is, as, as that bullet says and as Kate just gave an example of. However, with respect to the school building assistance funds, we've looked into that as a Select Board, and we have two pieces of information that lead us and I think others who have looked at it to conclude that that funding is not at risk if there's 3A non-compliance for two reasons, as it pertains to Hamilton, Wenham. One is that because the money would be paid to a regional school district and not to either Hamilton or Wenham, the administration has said in guidance that's been provided, and I think it actually is the third bullet where it discusses non-municipal entities seeking funding for projects in non-compliant towns. That particular piece of guidance specifically says that in a situation where a regional district receives school building assistance funds or any funds that would go to that regional district, that funding is not going to be at risk because one of the underlying member towns may or may not be compliant. So, so there's that reason that any funding that might come for the Cutler School expansion, if that passes, wouldn't be at risk. The other reason is specific guidance from EOHLC that was sent to Superintendent Tracy. He put the question directly to the state, and there's an email that I know has been circulated among some constituents who are asking about it, so it's a public record in which it's explicitly stated that, that that funding would not be tied up with issues of 3A.
Thank you so much for that.
May I just ask one question?
If you state your name for the record and-
May I? Excuse me?
Pull the mic down so you can-
May I just ask one question?
Please state your name again.
Marjorie Kajewski, 7 Perkins Street. Pingree Park, who owns that? Does the town own that? Is it?
The town owns, well, the park that's in the town, yes. I think it's most, all of it, yep.
Is it all of it? Is it Hamilton Inn, Wenham, or just?
No, it's, I think that the line is after the park.
Okay. Is that protected in any way from anyone getting a hold of it and putting housing there?
Yes, the town owns it.
So the town could sell it if they wanted to?
Also, I think-
It's excluded land. It's also excluded.
The state has devised a list of the kinds of land that you can consider for this zoning operation.
Okay.
People don't like exercise, but that's in effect what, what this is. And park, parkland or land that's in wetlands, land that-
So that's all exempt?
It's exempt, yeah. We can't, we wouldn't be able to use that if we wanted to, which we don't.
Thank you.
So if there's no other comment, I think I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. I think I probably need a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Anderson aye.
Weeks aye.
Pascaro aye.
John Berger aye.
Woodland aye.
7:49.
Discussion.
We have-
Madam Chair, one?
Yes.
We're now going to discuss this, so we just let people know what's happening next in case they want to stay. I see a lot of coats.
I see people leaving.
We are going to discuss that.
We're going to discuss this, we're going to take a couple of votes, so if you want to stay, please feel free. If you-
The vote we're going to take tonight, as I understand it, is to either recommend or not to the Select Board this legislation, correct?
There are two votes we need to take.
Could you just let them know that?
One has to do with the eligibility of the property to, or the districts that we have chosen, and the second one is whether or not to recommend-
To send it to the Select Board.
Well, it could be to recommend it as well. We have to have that discussion. We can either vote to send it with no recommendation and make a recommendation at a later date, or we can vote to recommend it and send it on to the Select Board. So those are the choices. We're going to have a conversation right now, we're going to make those decisions. If you want to stay, you're welcome to stay. If you want to leave and go home, I totally understand that, but just want to make clear what's happening next.
Question?
Question?
We close it here.
This is, the hearing's closed, so this is not-
Is there a procedural question? Will there be a question? Can we ask questions?
I think, I think the public hearing is closed, so I think at this point, we've heard what you need to say to us.
We'll allow questions after. If you have a different agenda items or no?
We do have another agenda item on entirely different topics, but around this issue, we are going to have our deliberation at this point because the hearing is closed. Yep. Thank you.
So one of the things that we have to, I'm proposing this as part of our discussion, one of the things that we have to determine as part of our report is eligibility of locations for our districts.
Can you put the map back up? Margaret, please. The map? Can you put the map back?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Can you minimize the zoom?
Minimize the zoom so the window, the window for the people.
Great.
Beautiful. Thank you.
So these, these two areas were recommended to us by our consultant on compliance, that they were compliant districts under the statute and whatever modeling the state was, was providing. District, District 1 is, I mean, I guess everything's walking distance, but this is literally walking distance to the train station. It is in very close proximity to it. District 2 is obviously not next to the train station, but it is in close proximity to accessing 128. I think both of these qualify under the definition of eligible locations, so I think we need to discuss that and then vote on that issue.
I think we've also had this conversation several times as a board when we were in the part of the process where we were trying to decide where the districts can and should be in order to both minimize the impact on downtown and also meet the requirements. And I think we tried to find areas where we could do that with the minimum and propose the minimum number of units possible under the regulate, well, they were guidelines at that point, but now regulations. So I would move that both of the districts be determined to be in eligible locations based on their proximity to transportation and suitability for multifamily and mixed-use development.
Second.
And I don't know if I need to be more formalized than that, but discussion is open if we want to do that. So having a motion and a second, I would take a vote?
Anderson aye.
Weeks aye.
Pascaro aye.
John Berger aye.
Woodland aye.
All right. And then the next question is how and whether to recommend the map, the locations, the zoning ordinance provisions, as we've spoken about them and amended them tonight, to the Select Board for the June 9th public meeting, town meeting.
So Rick, to your point, I think we have two things before us in terms of recommendation. One is sending this back to the Select Board for inclusion on the warrant as amended tonight. And then we as a board need to make a recommendation to Town Meeting as to what our position is on this, whether we approve, disapprove, how we think Town Meeting should vote. I'm going to suggest that on that second point, we hold that recommendation to Town Meeting for a later date, that we not make that recommendation tonight because I think there are still issues developing with respect to 3A. However, I would recommend that as amended tonight, we send the bylaw back to the Select Board for its consideration to include it on the warrant for June 9th.
Thank you for that explanation.
Dan, what, Dan, what, what issues do you think still remain?
I, I think there's still moving parts with respect to challenges to 3A that are out there. I think we heard multiple comments tonight about unfunded mandate litigation. We took a wait-and-see attitude in the fall with respect to, you know, moving this entire process forward. I'm not saying we're not moving the process forward, but we aren't required to make our recommendation to Town Meeting until before Town Meeting. We don't have to make that recommendation tonight.
Or at Town Meeting.
Or at Town Meeting, but logistically-
Technically just be-
Yeah, that's technically right, but logistically, I, I think we'd want to have a, another meeting in advance of Town Meeting on this particular vote.
And we do have a regularly scheduled meeting between now and the June 9th special town meeting.
Yeah, and we could schedule a special-
What's the deadline to be included in the warrant? Printed in the warrant?
I think if we can ask it to move forward into the warrant without-
But with the statement of the recommendation?
Well, I think we saw, I think we saw at the recent town meeting that there were several positions expressed at the meeting itself. So if we want it to be printed in the warrant-
We can find that date out from the administration.
Find that out, but I don't think it's necessary for it to be printed.
It's not tonight, I know that.
Well, if it's May 6th, we're not going to meet before then. I guess my thought is-
Is Steve online? Can he answer? He was on before. Can he answer that question?
Does someone from the Select Board know when?
Yeah, Steve Pulis is online, so.
Dave, are you thinking about the value of having the recommendation in the warrant book?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying one way or the other, but my perspective is that there's, from everything I see, and I'm happy to explain why, but I'll just say from everything I see, the issues before this board to make a recommendation, I, I don't think there are additional things that will transpire in the next six weeks that will materially change the considerations within the purview of this board, so I feel like we just need to go forward, but that's just my opinion in this seat.
Did you find Steve? Does Steve have an answer for the printing date?
He's muted.
Steve, can you hear us online?
He may have stepped away.
He's muted, Margaret.
He may have stepped away.
Yeah, he is muted. Steve, you are muted.
Maybe Kate knows. I, my recollection is there were some changes made for this last warrant at a Select Board meeting that was maybe a week in advance, and it had already been printed and mailed out to houses, so it, you know, it's going to be the end of May anyway, if not before.
They have to be in the mail at least, I think, three weeks before Town Meeting.
So three weeks before Town Meeting, sounds like when they have to be in the mail, so that probably means a month before Town Meeting, which would be May 9th.
And we have a May 8th meeting?
We have a May 8th meeting.
We have a May 8th meeting.
I don't know when they'll open and close the warrant.
I don't have that information, but I think it was May 6th, if I'm looking on right.
You all know I'm big on pop votes, so I don't think it's bad to say, to get a sense of the board, do we need to have a recommendation printed in the warrant or not? If it not, I would go with that and say we can, we can decide on the recommendation later.
Mr. Timman is at the microphone.
Thank you. Ben Timman, 236 Larch Row, member of the Select Board. So Steve would know more definitively, but I recall that he said that May 6th was a target date for comfortably mailing out the printed version of the warrant, but there, that there is some, some room there potentially. So it, my, my best guess is that if, that if you made a recommendation on May 8th and they hadn't been mailed out yet, that they could be mailed out on the 9th, but that is, I don't state that with great, great confidence, but I think that that's the most likely scenario.
Does, does that vote on a recommendation require a public hearing? So would we have to keep the public hearing?
Think we've had a public hearing?
No. I asked, I asked Town Council this question earlier today. Do, do we have to vote? Do, do we have to vote on our recommendation to Town Meeting tonight? And the answer is no, we do not. We just need to do it before Town Meeting. We have to have a, a Planning Board hearing. I mean-
Planning Board meeting?
A meeting. A Planning Board meeting where we make our recommendation. Yes, with notice.
I, here's the thing. Obviously, we all have our eyes on the, on the litigation, the legal developments, but fundamentally, this is a planning and zoning question, and I just don't believe that much is going to change in the next three weeks. We're here, you know, frankly, this board has needed to deliberate on this issue for a long time. I think we deliberate and we take a vote. That's my perspective.
So, I think that there is potential for significant change very, in the very near future, because, again, we heard multiple comments about unfunded mandate issues. I think that there is a decision imminent in those cases that may have an effect on us.
All right, but if the motion to dismiss, if the dismiss, if the motion dismissed is granted, I don't think that changes anything about our deliberation tonight, because I don't believe that that, I don't think personally, as I read the papers, I don't think it's a strong position by the towns that have contested this. And I'm happy to explain why, but that's my personal opinion. If the motion to dismiss is denied, it's not, it's not a, it's not a motion on the merits, it's not summary adjudication, so all that will continue is some type of further briefing schedule, right? Is there some type of cross, cross motion?
Yes.
It, it's going to actually adjudicate?
There are motions for, the towns all brought motions for preliminary injunction against the state, so I would say if the court grants motions for preliminary injunction-
But is that actually pending before the court?
Yes. That was, they were argued simultaneously.
I didn't realize that.
Under some of those cases, though, what would the impact be on us actually holding the meeting? I mean, if there was enough of a change that it changes our underlying understanding of what's happening here, I imagine it could also lead to a delay in the meeting. Is that potentially correct?
I think we saw that last fall.
Right. So I'm just thinking, like, the recommendation we make now, if we were to make a recommendation this evening, isn't necessarily the final recommendation, since if things change, I think we're, it's our, of our purview to also change our recommendation, or if the meeting is pushed off, we would go through this again.
How can you make a decision this evening if you have more?
I'm sorry, the board is deliberating. The public hearing is closed.
Scott, my-
Hey, Mrs. Majewski, please, let us have our board deliberation.
So, part of, Scott, part, part of this is, it's not our call in term, what you're, to your question, it's the Select Board's call, and this is a call they made in this, the fall, in September. And I, I think if there's an imminent decision from a court that could significantly change the legal landscape, I, I don't see why we would make an unnecessary recommendation tonight before we have full information.
Well, there are two recommendations we're making tonight, so I, I hear some applause. Number one, we need to just refer this back to the Select Board.
Right.
And the second thing is how we individually feel as Planning Board members about the legislation, correct? That's the recommendation we make to Town Meeting.
Well, it's about, about the regulations that we have put forward.
Correct.
I don't think we can say that our recommendation is at all related to what we feel about the statute.
Correct. So that's why tonight, I, my thought would be to just vote on moving this back to the Select Board, so we keep the process moving, so people get a chance to vote on it, and it gets in the warrant, and we can then table for tonight the decision, the discussion and the decision on whether we as a Planning Board feel we can recommend this to the town, correct? That's the second vote.
Particularly if we can have our next meeting before the deadline for printing the warrant.
We'll have to figure that out.
I, I have to say, though, I mean, not, sorry to interrupt, but, and I won't get strident about this, but like, this is the issue that we have heard probably most about 3A, is a lack of information. So, this body is the, from the government perspective, the subject matter expert on zoning and planning. This is the time. We are six weeks out from a vote potentially as a town on this. I think we need to have a fulsome deliberation, and we need to take a vote and put up a recommendation of this board, and inform the town what this board thinks about the proposed multifamily overlay districts, whether that's up or down. It's up to the Select Board to decide legal strategy. It's not up to this board. Let me say this, if the town of Middleton prevails on a preliminary injunction, that probably isn't going to influence my vote on a recommendation from sitting on this board whether or not I think it should go forward, because frankly, that's for the Select Board, which controls litigation, strategy in this town to decide. And I think whatever, why would I as a Planning Board member make the decision, be, make my decision influenced by the litigation strategy for a case that doesn't even have a direct implication for this town necessarily? It's all facts and circumstances dependent on the specific town and the showing of the costs incurred. That's all I'll say.
So, I, what I was going to say was, I was going to-
Before I rudely cut you off?
No, no, no. Was, I was going to, I was going to agree with something else you said, and I'm still going to agree with something else you said earlier tonight, but first, I'm going to agree with what Rick said, that I agree we should move the process forward so that we can keep this rolling towards a vote potentially for special town meeting on June 9th.
Can I have a motion to that effect?
Well, I think we're still discussing, because I want to answer, Mr. Anderson. I agree with you, Dave, that I think we need a recommendation in print in the warrant, but that doesn't have to be tonight, and, I mean, I, I'll agree with you, a preliminary injunction for Middleton is great for Middleton, but if a preliminary injunction is granted in those, in that litigation, I can see how that might have an effect on Wenham, and it might have an effect on our Select Board, and, I mean, we, we-
In our recommendation?
Yes, because if we didn't make a recommendation in September, when the Select Board decided that the timing wasn't right in September, right? That, that we weren't going forward, I'm sorry, that we weren't going forward with our November special town meeting. So, I could see something happening in that pending litigation where motions have been briefed and a decision is expected very soon that might have a direct impact on, on our town. So, we, I agree, I want to have a full and complete discussion on whether we suggest a Town Meeting to approve or not, or something else with respect to this, but we don't need to do that tonight. And we're going to have another meeting where, you know, we could probably devote a large portion of that meeting to this issue, and I'm sure if we have to have it on May 5th or something instead of May 8th, that we can accommodate that. So, that's my response to your last concern. So I would make a motion then, if, to Rick.
Should I read it out of the-
Are we through with the deliberation on this point?
If we are, I'm going to propose a motion.
I, why don't you go ahead and do that, Dave?
I move that we forward to the Select Board for its consideration of inclusion on the warrant for special town meeting, the proposed bylaw as amended tonight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'm going to take a vote. Mr. Anderson?
Anderson, aye.
Weeks, aye.
Pasquale, aye.
Shawnberger, aye.
Woodland, aye.
Okay, I'll make another motion.
I'm going to say, is there another motion?
I move that we defer making our recommendation to Town Meeting until either our May 8th meeting or a time earlier than that, so that our recommendation can be included in print in the town warrant.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion?
I appreciate what you're doing and the thought here, but I just feel like each time we kick the can on a fulsome deliberation, the clock is running out. There's just less and less of an opportunity for this board to have a fulsome discussion as a board, because I don't violate open meeting law. We're meeting here, I'll see you all in a month, and in that interim period, we five will not have another discussion about the multifamily overlay district, and that is another 28 days that the town is deprived of whatever thoughts are floating around in our head. I think that's a huge mistake.
I have a motion on the floor to defer the recommendation until the next meeting of the Planning Board or such an earlier date as will allow us to have this printed in the warrant, our recommendation printed in the warrant. I have a second. I think I need to take a vote.
Anderson, no.
Weeks, no.
Pasquale, aye.
Shawnberger, no.
Woodland, aye.
Sorry, what was Rick's? What was yours, Rick?
Yes.
It's 3-2.
2-3.
3 to 2.
Wait, wait.
Nones have it. Nones have it. So I think we're going to have to make a recommendation tonight. So, if I could have a motion doing so, I would entertain that, or if there's more discussion to be had.
Madam Chair, one.
I think we've been deliberating for two years on this and have spent a lot of time listening to people, a lot of time working on trying to make this the best it can be, given the statute we're dealing with, given the regulations we're dealing with, given the legal process that we're all sitting under and dealing with. And I think we just have to take a vote and commit one way or the other on what we've done. So, anyway.
Discussion?
Yes, please.
I, I have a statement that I've kind of worked on, because I've listened now for almost three years. It's consumed our board for three years. I've listened to my neighbors and constituents all through town, and I took some time. I'm not always the best orator or writer, but here are my thoughts. I'd like to read in the record and then submit a copy to Margaret. "For the past three years, our organization has been consumed by Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, monthly meetings, legal opinions, public listening sessions, interactions with state executive branch officials, and lots of deliberation, all in an attempt to make the draconian piece of legislation work for Wenham, and it just doesn't. Accordingly, I cannot, as an elected representative of the citizens of Wenham, support the zoning change. The legislation comes on the heels of Wenham's development of a master development plan and its submission to the Commonwealth who approved our plan. These ideas included the need for more commercial space, more diverse housing, and an attempt to preserve the historic nature and semi-royal roots of the town. Section 83A at many times is a direct conflict with the town's wishes. So, I went backwards in time, trying to figure out why Wenham in the late 50s appeared to try to stop the development spreading out from Boston. There was so little documentation from leaders, all I could find were rumors like, on small lots in the village, private well water was at risk of being contaminated by private sewer systems. And I heard advocates of 3A said it was nothing more than a redlining attempt to keep people out. But then, I looked at what Wenham was in the 1950s. Yes, there were some larger states, they were hunting and fishing cabins around the ponds, but much of the town economy was in raising dairy cattle to support the local H.B. Hood dairy. Post-World War II development included small Cape-style homes for returning veterans, a pretty simple way of life. Next, I looked at what's happening in neighboring Danvers and North Beverly at the time. Massive developments were planned on farms that were being sold and broken up. I can see why Wenham wanted to stop that type of development, and now here we are again, the buffer community between full suburbanization and the semi-ruled towns of Wenham, Hamilton, Manchester, Essex et al. We can stop the suburbanization, it's okay. There have been other state initiatives such as the independent living overlay district. This allowed towns to create 55-plus living communities in an attempt to free up more single-family homes for younger families. That didn't work. Why is this going to work to unlock the housing that people can afford? 3A is the builder's dream. 3A opens up huge swaths of development, developable land across eastern Massachusetts to developers with few restrictions. Yes, there are setbacks, height restrictions, et cetera. And it's not an affordable housing initiative, neither state-mandated Big A affordable housing or market affordable housing. Developers only need to plan for 10% of the state-mandated affordable housing, and nothing for market-rate affordable housing. Wenham already exceeds our 10% mandate. Given the free market, 3A will do nothing more than potentially create million-dollar-plus condos and apartments. How will that help younger people and families with homeownership? As you can see, I left out the numbers. I left out the potential need for expanded services. I left out all the numbers, because we need to first decide what we want to look like in the future. So what's in it for Wenham? That's when I, that's what I struggled with. We agreed as a town in the master plan that we needed commercial development and a more diverse housing stock, keeping in the character of the town. I don't see how 3A supports our idea for Wenham in the future, at least not enough to take the risks associated with 3A. Isn't the Commonwealth here to help our dreams come to fruition? 3A is not that legislation. Respectfully presented, Fred Woodland."
Catherine, we have it for the record. Anyone else on the board?
Yes, but Mr. Anderson wants to have the discussion. I'd like to hear from Mr. Anderson.
I have approached 3A first as what I felt was an overreach from Beacon Hill. It was, it is a poorly crafted piece of legislation that deferred way too much to the executive office of housing and livable communities. They took a four, five paragraph law and turned it into 20, 25 pages of regulations. It is something that has, as interpreted by the executive branch, stripped towns and communities of a lot of autonomy over what they want their communities to look like. We have never been able to perform the analysis that I think our town should have performed, been able to perform, which is to actually hear from our community, and specifically town government, about the capacity that reasonable development of dense housing could provide in this town. In previous meetings, I've stated my deep and fundamental concerns with, with the regulations in 3A, and that has not changed. But what has changed since that conversation is a clear and unequivocal statement by, statement by the highest court in this land, the SJC, excuse me, the highest court in this Commonwealth, by the SJC, that this is a constitutional and enforceable law, that the state attorney general is entitled to enforce and has powers to do so. That is a reality that we face. There's those in this community that have kind of said, and I'm not talking about anybody in particular, more a general sentiment, that there will be unending litigation about 3A and the regulations to the effect of, well, we can continue to kick the can. When I take a step back and think about all of this, and I take as much responsibility as anybody, the public discourse on 3A has been entirely unsatisfying to me, because it's been presented in a binary. You either comply or you don't. And that's not our town's fault in the first instance. That's how we were set up by the executive branch, in my opinion, by having 25 pages of regulations that really did, in a lot of ways, divest the town from having input. That being said, the way I prefer to look at 3A is through the lens of the master plan. We have had some incredibly dedicated town residents, many of which are here tonight, who have consistently showed up, as much as we've showed up, to talk about their concerns with the regulations and the proposed multifamily overlay district. But we had a, respectfully to everybody in this room and those who've attended the public hearings, we have had even more public input, significantly more public input in preparation of the master plan, and I was pleased and privileged to be a part of that in the steering committee. And so when I look at the multifamily overlay districts, I look at it through the lens of the master plan, and specifically, what were the community sentiments that bubbled to surface to the top through the 800-plus community touchpoints that we had? And the number, there were five key points. One of the keys, so, so I think it's important to actually just- One of the keys, so I think it's important to actually just touch on them briefly, and you put in the nickel, so you're gonna get the album, Dan, but out of the jukebox, but I will be, I will be relatively brief here. Let's think about the five key themes that emerged from this community, those that had the will and the interest to participate in the master plan process. Higher taxes are an issue. The impact, the fiscal impact of 3A and a potential development is currently being studied by this town. I'm working with a few other people, select board member Tymon, planning board member Schoenberger, we're looking at it respectfully with, as to Mr. Flynn. He included some assumptions, and I appreciate his diligence in looking at that report. It's not an easy document to read. I don't necessarily agree with his assumptions about the fiscal analysis, however, that's an ongoing process, and it's a transparent one for this community, and I encourage everybody that's invested this much in this process so far to continue to observe, work with, get some input in that fiscal analysis, because there's a lot of variables there in terms of the sizes of the units that are developed, the assumptions around the number of children that can be expected, average number of children per unit, the costs associated with each child. I mean, there's data out there, there's models, like you look at it and there's wide ranges. So 3A could have a positive or a negative, a net positive, a net negative fiscal analysis. I don't think we have enough, we'll never have enough to say definitively, that involves some measure of clairvoyance, but we will have enough to say these are the range of expected outcomes, and I do believe it is somewhere in the middle of positive to negative, and we can continue to look at that. So in terms of the first theme, the fiscal analysis and the taxes, it's uncertain. Two, community members express desires for improvement to municipal facilities. Again, I see this as mixed. When you have new development, particularly in the train station area, you have the potential for good municipal facilities. One of the reasons I propose the amendment for no direct costs is that I don't think that the town should be forced to bear, be obligated to bear those costs of infrastructure and municipal facilities. But that being said, in the hopes that we have strong leadership from the town, the outcome could be positive, and I think we have to bet on hope that our town can meet that challenge. Number three, Wenham's many historic places and landmarks are cherished community assets. They certainly are. We have very significant open spaces here in a historical sense, as well as a community enjoyment sense. I don't believe that either of these districts will negatively impact those. I don't believe that they'll positively impact those. I see that as a wash. Four, natural places, open spaces, recreation facilities, again, I don't think that there's necessarily a clear indication that there'll be a positive or a negative effect on that. But let's turn to five. Housing merged is a top concern for community members, particularly concerning affordability, availability, and diversity of housing types. There is no question that the overwhelming sense of the community was that there needs to be an increase in diversification of housing types in this town. So fundamentally, I look at 3A and the proposed multifamily overlay districts as an imperfect, but possible movement forward on that. When we went through the master plan process, and if you look at the maps within there, the multifamily overlay district number one, as well as number two, were both identified as key sites for mixed use and housing development. Now, I don't particularly think it's great to have density of the amount that the state is mandating. I don't know that we will ever have that level of density, even through a development scheme. You know, I don't know if it's brought up tonight, hopefully it's not lost on anybody, that the town owns a number of the parcels in multifamily overlay district two, so the town has some control over the amount of development in that area. But when I look across those five categories, I consider the fact that the SJC has said that this is a constitutional law, that I believe is gonna be here to stay one way or the other. Ultimately, I'm inclined to believe that we should recommend this from a zoning and planning perspective based upon the strong sense of the community as articulated in the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I'm just not belabor the point, but I'm, I'm just gonna say, when I read the statute and I look at what this board has been able to do within the context of the regulations and prior to that, the guidelines, I think if we get to a point where the statute is the driver of this, we will see all the density within half a mile of the train station. I prefer this way of planning for it. It puts multifamily housing out by the highway and at the other transportation hub in Wenham. While I completely agree with all the statements that everyone has made about the fact that the number of permissible units for Wenham is really unrealistic, I do think that, at least in the downtown area, the multifamily overlay district one is a reasonable thing for us to do in response, regardless of the state law, in response to the master plan's clear articulation of the need for different kinds of housing and mixed-use development in Wenham. I think that for this town at this time, with the statute we have, this is the best thing we can do, and I am supportive of it. Anybody else?
Oh, go ahead, Scott.
I'll just say quickly, I mean, I think the law sucks. That would be my non-legal interpretation of it. And I also obviously joined the board more recently, so I went from observer to participation. But I also am aware that something else that would really, I'll just stick with the same word, suck for our town, is if we lost control entirely over this process. And so if we end up in a situation where Wenham is at the whims of some people who are not from Wenham, and it's people coming in from the outside, and we have the state government imposing something on us, that poses a much larger risk to me than us doing the best we can to comply with something that's not saying that we like it, or it's necessarily a good thing, but it's also, doesn't mean it's not the best path forward at the moment.
I have been very close to this issue for a very long time.
Thank you, thank you.
Going back to Zoom meetings on the subcommittee, stretching back to February of 2023, trying to figure out where these numbers came from, trying to make sense of metrics that EOHLC seemingly pulled out of thin air, and I think those metrics are arbitrary. I don't think that they make any sense with respect to the town of Wenham. For example, we are a commuter rail community, as designated under the regulations, I suppose, which is supposed to subject us to a 15% cap on unit capacity. EOHLC, in the way that they've drafted their metrics, however, subjects us to a 25% cap, which effectively turns us into a rapid transit community. Chair Weeks, with respect to your point about you're worried that the regulations might change, and if we're under the statute, then we'd be forced to put all of these units within a half mile of the station, I think that the only way that we are allowed or able to get to Boulder Lane, and the only way that EOHLC is, is able to get outside of the statutory language that says one reasonably-sized district within a half mile, is because those metrics are arbitrary and they're trying to inflate numbers for towns. So if they had to abide by the statutory language, I don't think our numbers would be anywhere near 365. So I'm not concerned about that at all, because I think if we were forced to put all of our units within a half mile of that station, we wouldn't be talking about 365 units. I'm not happy with how some of our institutions have handled 3A from, it is a mandate, make no mistake about it, we have to, we're forced to take action. I think the SJC kicked this down the road a bit, they could have decided more questions that were before them that would make this much easier for not only boards, but citizens to address this issue. I think the attorney general and the EOHLC, the way they handled or responded to the SJC's decision, wasn't exactly in good faith. I don't think there was a robust public comment period for these new regulations. We, as a board, have said on several occasions that but for the 3A mandate, we never would have zoned the way we have for these particular districts. So, that said, and having been very close to this, I don't think we can do any better. We've all put a ton of effort into this. I don't think we can come up with a better plan for Wenham. I get that, you know, there are questions about, there are fears about how many units are gonna be built. This is a zoning exercise. I get it, we've heard all the criticism, I'm not trying to reopen that, but we've done the best that we could. I, I think it is a mistake for us to take this vote tonight, and I've seriously thought about abstaining on this, but I'm not gonna do that. With the caveat, of course, that we can always all change our recommendation before town meeting.
We have one more meeting, yeah.
But if you're gonna put me to a vote tonight on whether we should recommend this or not, I don't think we should lose control of this process. I don't think that we can do better, and I would recommend it, but I hesitate to do that because I sense that there are going to be further developments on this, on this issue.
Well, I think.
And however, last thing, if there are, we've done our best to cover ourselves with the sunset provision. That was the purpose of this. So if there is a further development in litigation that is gonna invalidate our requirements, we've done all we can to cover ourselves, so that was a yes.
Is there a pending motion?
There is not. I think you could make one.
Is it procedurally proper to renew Dan's motion to defer a recommendation until the May 8th meeting? I know that's gonna whiplash everybody in the room.
You can make another motion.
You can make another motion, yeah.
I mean, my, my goal is to start this conversation, to have this conversation. I think we just had a good conversation, and I feel a little bit like I'm...
I feel like we had a straw poll.
In a marital, like in a marital situation, I'm like, honey, I'm glad we just had that conversation. We just had a conversation and, and shared more fulsome thoughts than I think this board has shared in quite some time, at least as a body. I wanna put out one question to the board as we consider this. I understand, and I think it's in the public record, so I'm not, we can ask Eric Mansfield, I believe there's, he, his perspective is that there's no more than 50 water connections available for our current water supply. The supply is only 50 more residential units. That's probably a back-of-the-envelope and not terribly precise, but let's assume that's accurate for the moment. And let's assume for the moment that, that Willow mixed-use development building that was highlighted earlier is a viable development package, and let's assume for the moment that it's 18 units, two buildings is what the town could tolerate of mixed-use development.
I think it's, yeah, okay.
If we went to three, it'd be 54. I don't know if there's that water connection. So 36 units, we can all try and decide whether the average number of units, and it depends on, on unit size, that, you know, the average number of children, the numbers I've seen are anywhere from .2 to .9, but there, there's a lot out there, so we all need to do our homework on that. So you're talking about somewhere between seven and 32 students with a mixed-use development. That is a development that is, I believe, wholly consistent with this, with the spirit of the master plan, and I believe that is what the town can currently do with 3A, with its current water supply. So I think that's an important point from a pragmatic point. I understand everyone says, and I fully appreciate it, if a developer has a way, they'll find it, but as we've seen in this town recently, developments that don't take in consideration what this town has in terms of resources are simply not economically viable or financially viable. So I think that's an important point of consideration as well. So.
Are you making a motion?
No, I just was talking, but... I would, I would make a new motion to defer our recommendation to the select board on the previously referred, proposed Wenham multifamily overlay.
Districts.
District.
Districts.
Districts.
Unless you wanna limit it.
No, districts to our May 8th meeting.
Or such earlier time as necessary.
Or such earlier time as necessary.
Such earlier time as necessary.
I mean, I think we have a straw poll taken tonight, so.
Our second motion.
Do we need Mr. Poulos?
I'm sorry, Margaret. Steve Poulos is available if you want to discuss the dates with him, that we need to have things back in.
I texted him to try to find him.
Steve, are you available? There he is.
Come here, sorry I missed you. Can you see me? Hear me?
We had a question about when the last date is to print the warrant. We're not clear whether we're gonna vote a recommendation tonight or at our next meeting after some more time.
We had a question about when the last date is to print the warrant. We're not clear whether we're gonna vote a recommendation tonight or at our next meeting after some more time. We had a question about when the last.
Thank you. It's playing back because someone else was on, yeah.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, did you hear my question, like multiple times?
Yeah, I did. So it's in May, so roughly, we, we've talked to the printer, May 7th is, you know, what he gave us is like an absolute drop dead to, you know, to give us some assurance that the warrant, a physical warrant will be in everybody's mailbox by about a week ahead of the special town meeting. Generally, we aim for two weeks with the annual, but we have more time, so we're, you know, we're using a week, pushing past that seventh deadline to getting into, I think the seventh is a Wednesday. Thursday, if you meet on that Thursday night, you know, we get it out to them by Friday, assuming that there's no significant language change that has to go through council for review, you know, potentially push us into Monday, but you just, you know, you're, you're playing with, you know, you're already at a week, a little less than a week, you're kinda gambling, doesn't get there in time for a special town meeting. I think ultimately, it's a kind of a policy decision for the select board, whether they want, you know, it to be electronic distribution or continue with the physical distribution of the warrant. There's options there, but that's kinda what we're up against.
Thank you. So, I mean, we have a regularly scheduled meeting on the 8th, we could do our meeting on Thursday, the 1st, if people are available. Or Tuesday, the 6th, I think.
In terms of our recommendation as it'll appear in the warrant, are we just gonna have our numbers there, or we have a qualitative statement as to why? And do we want more time if we're gonna prepare something based on?
I think it's just typically.
A number.
The board recommends whatever the numbers are.
I know, I know, it's just for some things for the finance committee, when we had potentially thorny votes, we provided context to help people understand maybe why we voted the way we voted.
In writing, did you do that, or did you do that at the meeting itself?
We would do it in the warrant book.
In the warrant book.
I don't know if that's practice here, I'm not.
The difference here is that we've had public hearings, and so we've had more opportunity, I think, to get people's feedback on this, so I don't know that we need to do that.
No, I'm not saying we need to, you know, I was more wondering if.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which, we would all have to agree on the language, which hit the number of attorneys on this board, my desk.
Yeah, can I ask Steve, is Steve still there?
Yep, yeah, he is.
Yep.
Okay, Steve, here's the $64,000 question. If we have a meeting on May 8th, and can you then, do you have enough time to put our recommendation in the warrant, or do you need us to have a meeting earlier than May 8th? I know that, I'm just out, he, there was-
He's pushing.
Yeah, I'm just-
Well, I mean, so your recommendation, I guess I'm not really, well, again, we're pushing, anything passed, usually he's, usually the vendor is quicker than he promises, right? So we kind of assume that, but he gave us the drop dead date of the 7th, he gave us the, we can do, we can go with the warrant, can go out without a planning board recommendation, similarly to how it goes out, you know, without-
Steve, you're good, we got it.
Okay.
I heard drop dead, that's good.
Yeah, he said drop dead.
I know, he just didn't know if he really meant drop dead.
No, he meant it, I think, anyway. Yes, Margaret?
I think, Steve, also, do they have to create some commentary or with their recommendation? Don't they need to submit some kind of-
Do you need commentary?
Yeah.
Other than?
Yeah, I mean, I'm more concerned with the language, you know, of the proposed zoning. The recommendation is quick, so I mean, if, you know, if we wanna push it out till Friday, and all we're waiting on is a planning board recommendation, I mean, that's a couple keystrokes. You know, so I'm not sure what, how much change needs to be made, proofreading, and then if council needs to get involved, it just adds days to the process, where if it's just waiting for the planning board's vote, if the preference is for the vote to go out with the warrant, they can also just say recommendation to be made at town meeting, which is not uncommon at all, and you can just make your recommendation on town meeting floor.
We'll have the draft article and the language of the bylaw to you tomorrow. They amended that language tonight, so they're gonna, we'll send that to you tomorrow.
Okay.
So it's just the vote you're waiting for.
So it's just gonna be the recommendation.
We also took a vote on the suitability of the, eligibility, I guess is the legal word, of the districts, so that's done. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to defer, to change, to defer the vote till the next meeting, whenever that will be, before the drop dead deadline, I think. Was that the intention, that you wanted the meeting to be, the vote to be before the drop dead deadline? Mr. Anderson?
Well, I think we need to, with that, I think we need to agree on what, when we're gonna meet, like if it's gonna be May 6th.
May 6th? Does that work for everybody here?
May 6th works for me.
A select board meeting, May 6th?
Is, May 6th is a Wednesday, so.
Tuesday.
Oh, it's a Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday, May 6th, is that a select board meeting that night?
Yeah, the select board will be opening and finalizing the warrant on the 6th.
Do you wanna try for the 1st?
I can't do the 1st personally.
What time's the select board meeting?
6:30, although we're gonna be having executive session at 5:30.
Can we do a joint session?
Could we do a joint, could we do a Zoom call earlier? Cause it's not like we-
Are we just talking about availability of the room?
Yeah.
We don't need to be in the select board room.
We could have it in person only.
Are you okay with them having a meeting the same time as the select board, Steve?
I have no, I have no problem with that, if you don't.
We'll have to find a location for it.
Yeah, we can do that. We can have it at my house.
The 6th?
Can you do a Zoom?
Say what?
Can you do a projected Zoom?
I could, yes, I could. We could figure it out.
May 6th? May 6th?
Yeah, that would work, but we need to, we have a motion pending.
I know, we were, we wanted a date to put in the motion.
Are we gonna put it in the motion?
Yes. That was what Mr. Anderson wanted, right? So May 6th?
Yeah, it could be Thursday, May, Tuesday, May 6th.
Yeah, I will move that we defer taking a vote on whether or not to recommend the town of Wenham multifamily overlay districts, MBTA, 3A zoning districts by law to May 6th, 2025, at 6:30 PM, or such other earlier time as agreed by the board.
I'll second the motion.
That was to defer recommendation to town meeting, right?
It's to change-
I recommend-
-what's taken earlier.
With the straw?
No, no, the vote that we said we were gonna deliberate and vote tonight, and now we're taking, now a motion is on the floor to take, basically rescind that vote, if I understand it correctly, so that we would wait to take the vote. We took the vote, we had, I mean, we took the, we made the decision to take a vote tonight, we all stated our positions, we did not vote on that, there is no motion to take that vote tonight, instead, we have a motion to, again, defer until the 6th. I need a second.
It's already been seconded.
I'll second it.
It was rearticulated, so. All right, all in favor?
Anderson, aye.
I think we should just go ahead and vote, so I'm gonna say Weeks, no.
Pasquale, aye.
Schumberger, no.
Woodland, aye.
So now it's 3-2 the other direction, so we'll see you on May 6th.
So that's a straw poll and not a recommendation vote that we went through earlier tonight?
Correct.
Okay. We're meeting on May 6th.
Correct. At 6:30 PM is what I heard, or such earlier time as we may need to do in order to accommodate the printing schedule. All right, with that, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you for your patience.
No, because it's not gonna be a public hearing, probably.
That's why I wanted to vote tonight.
But there is gonna be other opportunities for public input, such as before the Select Board putting it on the warrant, obviously a town hall, a town meeting is-
A town meeting, for sure. Thank you very much. I need to bring my timer more off.
We're not-
We're not done yet.
We still have other, we have other items to discuss, so we're gonna continue our meeting. Oh, no, no, it's all right, have a good evening. All right. The next item on the agenda is a discussion and possible vote on the choice of consultant for the updates to rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land, which I respectfully submit we need to vote on tonight so that that $65,000 doesn't, for whatever reason, disappear.
I sent you all of the recommendations, references, what do you call them?
I'm sorry, what?
The refer, references?
References, you were checking references on the two consultants we had.
And I did send those to you in your last email.
Yes, you did.
Hope you all had a chance to look at those. None, there were none that came back with any negative remarks for either organization.
Was there one in particular that was better than another, if you can share that, or do you feel comfortable in that?
When I looked through them, I felt that the Innis Associates seemed to give a little more personal service to the other towns that they've worked for, as well as, there was no boilerplate, you know, documents that they submitted, that one of the other companies had submitted some boilerplate documents to one of the towns. Yeah. So I think we might get some better service, and their cost was slightly lower.
So we, there was no negative information about Innis?
No.
And they're the only ones that have submitted an actual proposal still, right? From the other one we all made?
Yeah, we didn't go out for full proposals.
Oh, I just mean the document, what they sent back was-
Yeah, they sent a little more. Sort of like, well, you don't, we didn't really ask for it, so they didn't feel like they had to, but she went the extra step and provided it, which I really appreciate.
It seemed like she was actually interested in the work, the other one was in the-
Exactly right, yeah.
And this is just your recommendation to the town administrator, who will make the ultimate decision and sign a contract with the firm that they chose.
All right, I move that we recommend Innis.
Second.
All in favor?
Anderson, aye.
Weeks, aye.
Pasquale, aye.
Schumberger, aye.
Woodland, aye.
Okay, that will be a welcome development, because I do think that-
Yeah, that'd be great to get started on that project.
That project needs to happen. Do we have the meeting minutes? I don't know that I-
There are no meeting minutes from-
You're kidding me.
The April 9th. There's no minutes.
Just saying.
So we'll table those until the next, till the May meeting.
Till the May meeting.
On May 6th.
Is there anything else that people wanna bring before the board that we haven't anticipated for tonight's meeting?
I move that we adjourn until May 6th.
At 6:30 PM.
6:30 PM, at a location to be determined.
Second.
All in favor, we have a motion on the floor to disband this happy crowd until 6:30 on the 6th of May?
Anderson, aye.
Weeks, aye.
Pasquale, aye.
Schumberger, aye.
Woodland, aye.
We are done.